Like to call this meeting to order, a regular meeting of the Village Board on Monday, July 19th at 7:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Board Room. This meeting has been given public and also can be accessed via WebEx. This meeting has been called to order in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes, in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Roll call shows all Village Board members present except for Trustee Kaminski, who is excused. At this time, I will ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next item is President's Report. I have nothing to report tonight. I do see Lynn. Yep, Lynn is in the audience, so I won't take away her thunder here. So we'll go on to the next item, which is announcements of forthcoming events, of public interest committee and department reports, with committee reports and committee chairs, starting with Trustee Rick Miller.
General Government and Finance met tonight right before this meeting, and we will meet again on Monday, August 16th at 6:00 PM in this boardroom.
Thank you. Trustee Myers.
In public safety, we will meet in this room in August 3rd, 6:00 PM.
Okay. And then with Trustee Kaminski absent, does someone have the next scheduled meeting for Public Works?
Yeah, I can do it. Public Works is going to meet on Monday, August 16th at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events, of public interest committee or department reports they'd like to bring forward? Anything else?
I do have a question.
Sure.
The neighbors night out that the police station usually holds, is that going on this year?
August 10th, at Fireman's Park?
Fireman's Park?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody know what time? I would just like to get that out there.
Usually it's like 5:30, isn't it?
Such a fun event.
Excuse me, I don't have the time, but we will get that out on the website and the Facebook page if people are interested. We'll get that information out on both the Facebook page, the website, and I believe if you've registered through our website into the email notifications, we can get it emailed to folks, too. So there's lots of ways for them to find out.
Lynn, you said Fireman's Park, right? So that would be a different venue where normally it's held at the police station. So they're, okay, so then they're moving it to Fireman's Park for those that at least make note of the date. Please make note of the location change, that it is now located at Fireman's Park.
Five to eight.
Okay, from five to eight. All right. And along with that, and thank you for that interruption there, Lynn, are you here to talk about Fourth of July? And isn't there also an event this coming Thursday? Or, yep, Taste of Germantown?
Kiwanis.
Sorry, I'm sorry? Trustee Myers?
I think it's Kiwanis. Taste.
Correct. It's supported by, do you happen to know what time it starts? Okay, thank you.
Mark said.
Five to nine. So this Thursday on the 22nd, there is a Taste of Germantown event also at Fireman's Park from five to nine. Does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events, of public interest committee or department reports? If not, we can go to Citizen Import and Public Appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda. If there is anyone in the audience or joining us via WebEx that would like to come forward for Citizen Import or Public Appearance, all I would ask is you state your name and your address for the record. If you're in the audience, please come to the podium. If you're joining us via WebEx, please let the moderator know that you're interested in speaking.
My name is Lynn Gergich. I live at West 168 North 11062 Ashbury Circle, Unit 5. And I'm here tonight representing the Kiwanis Club and the Fourth of July event, and basically just to thank the village for all their support for that event. Both the parade, the activities at Fireman's Park, and the fireworks, you are heavily involved in, whether you know it or not, and we certainly appreciate all the support for Park and Rec Department, Department of Public Works, Fire Department, and Police Department. We couldn't do it without you, and I feel very good about the way the event went this year. If anybody has any feedback, I'm certainly glad to hear it. Always trying to work with the community to make this bigger, well, not always bigger and better, but a better event. I've been organizing it for nine years, and this is my last year that I will be organizing it, and we'll wait to see what comes of it as of next year. That's for the Kiwanis Club to yet determine. But that whole time, I just want to express my appreciation. I've learned so much about my community, more so the inner workings of the village, and how you do support those events, and the citizens should be very thankful that we have such a great governmental entity in the village, so we can do these types of things. Anybody have any questions about the event or feedback? Just let me.
Trustee Myers?
Thank you, Lynn, for all the years that you have actually run this. You've done a great job.
Lots of support, lots of help.
No event like this can't be even started or organized or made to be as successful as it is without all the help in the background. And Lynn has been a great contributor to that for many years, and has the ability to bring in a lot of support and a lot of volunteers to help pull it off and make it successful for all those that are attending. So for that, I appreciate very much, and for all the village staff that it's there to help. We're here to help you so that our residents can enjoy that event as well. So thank you for everything you've done.
You're welcome.
Additional statement?
Yes, Trustee Myers?
Going to say, as additional statement, I thought the parade starting at 3:00 was a great idea, as far as having a continuation and just going right into the park thereafter.
It seemed a little bit warmer, being on the street.
It's July.
It was probably the warmest day of the year so far.
Oh, and the new shelter worked out just awesome for, we had three vendors located in there.
Excellent.
Lots of positive comments from the residents, seeing the shelter for the first time. Just that we have handouts that it's available for rent, just kind of, you know, just so new. And I felt the stress of that accountability for having the first event in that new building. Everything out okay with that as well. But yeah, lots of great comments.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward for Citizen Import or Public Appearance at this time? Anyone else? Okay, then we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is appointments.
Motion to approve, Roman, seven appointments.
Okay. We have a motion, motion and a second, to approve all appointments as listed under Item A, Subsection 1 and 2. Is there any discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Next item is Consent Agenda. Board?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda, Roman, 8A through D.
Motion made and seconded to approve Consent Agenda Items A through D, as the clerk had come around earlier and had passed out a change to Item C, which is the resolution to carry over 2020 General Fund projects.
Correct. There's the addition of the picnic tables. That was actually at the General Government and Finance meeting, so that is now on this list as well, and the resolution does have that shown on it as well. So the new total is $210,449.
Thank you. Any further discussion on a motion to approve Consent Agenda?
Mr. President, can we look at the minutes from 21st of June? Go to page one and look at the roll call. Trustee Myers, you were at the meeting, right?
Thank you. You're just reminding me I was supposed to bring that up. Thank you, Bill.
I will correct that and make sure Trustee Myers is listed present.
Yes, Trustee Jan Miller.
Last page of the minutes, the next meeting says it's at, on May 17th, which it really is July today. Thank you.
Basically, every time.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the Consent Agenda? And we can include those changes without additional motion?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. No discussion? We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. That takes us then to Unfinished Business, with Unfinished Business Item A, Resolution 18-2021, authorizing municipal and direct charges for public fire protection. I will then turn the meeting over for some information, background, and I believe of information as requested by this board. To start it off, to our Village Administrator, Steve Kraklow.
Okay, thank you, and I'm just connecting to the displays here. Actually showing up on the back TV, but not. Let's connect from that. It's not me. Apologize for the delay here. Showing up, so I guess the option I have is to. Old school. Take a second. Continue to have. So there are ones. Okay. Yeah, the regular. No, it's the very old school. We'll see how good your computer is. Presentation is in the packet. Now it's. And if I'm going to share on WebEx, I need somebody to give me permission to do that. Yep, it's not going over WebEx at this time. But I would say, at this point, go ahead with presentation. So we did have a discussion on the public fire protection fee at the June meeting, and there were several questions that came from the Village Board from that meeting. How will impact fee, how will the fee impact industrial and commercial users? What would be the combined impact of the regular water increase and direct billing of the PFP? How do other communities pay their PFP? And then how would this look on a typical quarterly water bill? So we're back this evening before the Village Board with responses to those questions, and I guess, you know, tonight would be one of the nights that we would need some direction from the Village Board on how you would like to go. So this shows four different residential customers, and in the packet, I also included the actual redacted copies of their bills. So these are real customers, real bills. We took out all the personal information. Identified them here on this table as A, B, C, and D, and I'll just walk through one of them. Customer A has a current water bill of $35.88, current quarterly sewer bill of $102.23 for a current total bill of $138.11. And I guess one of the things I would note, if you go back to the very beginning of this process, when we had Baker Tilly talking about the rate application, that puts us in the very, in the bottom quartile or 10% even of water bills for communities. Germantown water bills are very low compared to neighboring communities. With a 49% increase for water, that would be an additional $17.58 per quarter. So every three months, they would see that additional 17.58. If the Village Board shifted 75% of the public fire protection fee to the water bill, that would add another $15.54. So Customer A would see a new quarterly bill of $174.23, an increase from the current $138.11. So that, and that would show up on a separate line for the bill, the public fire protection fee. That line actually is on the bill right now, but it's, but there's $0 associated with it. Customer B would see their total bill going up from 147 to 181. Customer C, which is, must have a lot of, as a father of six, a lot of teenagers taking long showers, a current bill of $386.59, and theirs would go up to $450. Customer D, which is a lower water user, currently has a bill of $101.30, theirs would increase to 129.93. We also took a look at various commercial and industrial users. These are our top industrial water users, and I haven't identified them by name here, but just by the type of industry. And I'll walk through a couple of examples here. Our food processor, number one, which in the last quarter here had a water bill of The 49% increase would, would give them an increase of about $34,000. The public fire protection fee would be $2,484, so their bill would go up to 106.618. And obviously, this is a very heavy water user. There, the second business is also a food processor, but not as heavy a user of water. Their current quarterly bill is $11,061.761. They would see an increase of $5,763 from the regular water increase, and 75% of the PFP would, would be about $1,800. So their, their new bill would be a little bit under $20,000. I will jump down to manufacturer in the middle of the page is currently, has a bill of $3,730 per quarter for water. They would see an $1,800 increase for the water portion. Since they have a smaller connection, their share of the PFP would, would be $390, which would give them an increase, or their new bill would be about $5,948. And then finally, I'll drop down to the bottom, a chemical company here in town, currently has a bill of, a quarterly water bill of $1,639. The PS, the increase would be 803, the PFP $123 for a new bill of $2,565. So there is a significant impact, although generally, and it's, I thought it was more appropriate to show these as general companies, not as specifically named, but these are all large company, very large companies who are, you know, seeing expenses of well over a million dollars a month. So this is, with one exception, the car wash would probably be the exception to that. But, so they are significant, but they're, they're not likely to be things that dramatically change business models for these companies. We took a look at some small businesses as well. A childcare facility, a couple of taverns, and actually a couple of pet care facilities, and you can see the impact on the bills there. You know, they were ranging in quarterly bills from $27 to $227, and they would increase in a range from $55 to $354 per quarter. And then finally, we did take a look at some other large industrial users that are not heavy water users. A couple of manufacturers, and then some assisted living facilities. And here you can see again, water bills range from $565 a quarter to about $1,300 a quarter, and increased to, from $964 to $2,053 per quarter. And I'll pause there. That was kind of an overview of the impact that this would have on various residences, businesses, et cetera. If there are any questions on those, on those impacts, I can answer those, otherwise I'll move on, and we'll talk about what neighboring communities are doing.
Questions? Trustee Rick Miller.
Yeah, the question is, well, I guess I didn't realize that it's a flat fee for the residences at $15.54, that's 75% of the PFP.
Yeah, and I, and I just, so you can kind of, we can infer what it would be at 50% or 25%, just on a fraction basis, but the PFP is based on the meter size. So most residents are at 5/8 or 3/4, which would be $15 per, per quarter. The businesses obviously have larger connections, the more water they're using, the larger their connection, and the larger the connection, the higher the PFP.
Yeah, I was under the impression it went by volume or usage, just like the other stuff, but this is just a flat connection fee.
Yeah. It's size. Yeah, yeah, it is, it's a flat connection fee based on the size of the connection.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Jan Miller.
And Steve, right now, we're charging the PFP on the tax bill.
Correct. The PFP is 100% on the property tax bill at this point.
Okay.
Just for those that might be watching or listening, so you've got the 49% increase, that's just the recommended increase in the water utility minus the PFP or the fire protection. So that would just be the recommended amount of increase required to keep the water utility within a correct amount so that it can cover its infrastructure.
Correct. The first step that the PSC takes, the Public Service Commission, when they review the rate adjustment application, is they look at all of our, all of our infrastructure, all of the, all of the pieces of equipment that we have to maintain to provide water, the wells, the towers, the pumps, the pipes, the valves, all of that equipment, and they, they run some calculations that determine what are the revenue requirements to be able to maintain that level of infrastructure. And that review came up with a revenue requirement that was about $1.2 million higher than what we're collecting right now per year, and that translates into a 49% rate increase. So that's, and I should point out, that's on average. The next step that the PSC is working through right now is then to apply that to a rate structure. So, you know, there's, the amount of, based on the amount of water that you use, the, some users will, if you use a million gallons, you pay a little bit less for the million and first gallon than you do for the first gallon. So there is a scale based on water usage that adjusts that rate. That's what they're working through right now, to distribute those costs among the various water users. That's the second step of the PSC review.
Okay. Since I've been part of the Village Board since 2007, I can only remember one rate increase. That was around 2010. All others that were ever brought forward were always either negated or shot down by this board, by a majority of this board. Not this board, but the Village Board, for whatever reason. So now comes the time where the utility needs to cover itself, and the rate of increase because of those that weren't passed earlier becomes a little bit heftier in order to catch it up. And that's, of course, you can point the finger at a lot of other different people on previous boards, but it comes time for this board to decide what, what makes sense. And unfortunately, not for us, but for our residents, it's something we have to consider and look at carefully, so that we're not creating unneed burden just for the, for the privilege and the service of providing water. So the 75% that you've decided upon, is that just random choice, or just for the sake of example?
For these slides, it's just a sake of example. At the June meeting, the feedback from the board was that there, there was some interest in shifting, probably not 100%. And as we get into some additional slides, I'll, I have the number broken out for 25%, 50%, and 75%. And the Village Board can select any one of those numbers, or, or anything in between, or, you know, or nothing, or all of it tonight. Those are all options that are available. For these slides, I selected 75% just to show the example.
Okay. And then for the sake of information, what is the percentage of increase from last year's fire protection paid by the General Fund to this year's? year's fire protection paid by the general fund to this year's?
I believe that was, it was less than forty-nine percent. I'm looking at our budget manager, he's probably running these numbers as we're, as we're talking, but it was, I believe, about a fifteen percent off the top of my head. We were, we were at about five hundred thousand, and and it would be going up to approximately six hundred thousand, and we would have to fund that in next year's budget out of the property tax levy if we don't keep that the same.
Trustee Myers.
Steve, I was gonna, you did mention one point two million dollars, and and with this increase of forty, forty-nine percent would take us up to that number. Was that a number that the PSC came up with?
Yes.
So basically speaking, as the President had mentioned in regard to these different amounts, seventy-five, fifty, or whatever, if we went to something less than that, how would they, well, how would they view that if we do it at fifty percent?
And I I should clarify, the the forty-nine percent increase and the public fire protection fee are two separate, two separate issues. The forty-nine percent increase is is related to the, the, the amount of revenue that's needed to provide, you know, water service to the community. What the public fire protection is, is a separate calculation that that estimates the cost of providing the infrastructure for fire protection, and then communities are required to make that payment to the water utility, and and communities have two choices of how to do that. You can either choose to do it on the property tax levy, which is what we've been doing now, or you can put all or some of that on, directly on the water bills that that the the water utility customers are are paying. So that, that's the choice that that you have before you hear tonight. The forty-nine percent, when the PSC continues their next phase, completes their next phase of review, we'll be bringing that back to the Village Board for review and approval. I would expect, based on the last conversation I had with the PSC, either the second meeting in August or the meeting in September.
Thank you.
I could add, and the Village Attorney just pulled up a slide from the the presentation in in June, the, currently, we're paying one hundred percent of the PFP, which is five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars through the property tax levy. That's going to increase to six hundred thousand dollars when the the rate increase is implemented, with a second increase one year later of up to six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. So it'll go up about sixty-three thousand dollars in twenty-two, and then another eighty-three thousand dollars in twenty-three.
Are we then saying that there'd be another increase to push that up to the water utility in twenty-three?
That is, that is not, that is not related to the, to a second water rate increase, which will be another decision the Village Board will have in the future. That, the the PFP is is calculated separately.
Trustee Hudson.
I can't speak to the 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 prior ten years. I have great sympathy, and obviously, our own water bill be going up forty-nine percent also. What what I have a hard time with is in options A, B, and C, options A and B, their water bill is going up somewhere in the mid-ninety percent, and then in option, option C, they're actually going to look at an increase of over a hundred percent. That's asking an awful lot from our citizens at at one fell swoop in time, and maybe these two items should be separated and dealt with, maybe one now and one in the future. I have a hard time. The smaller the user, greater the increase is going to be. So for those people in our community that might be living on Social Security, they're going to be paying the largest percentage increase on top of that forty-nine percent increase. I think that's asking an awful lot of taxpayers and our citizens.
Can you clarify A, B, and C again, so when he looked at residential water users? Which one's going up two hundred percent? I'm I'm missing where.
I didn't say two hundred, I apologize, D. It's a hundred and some odd percent, I believe.
D goes from a current total of one oh one to a future total of one twenty-nine.
Could you, could you pull up the slide, please, so we can talk?
Water only. Sorry, yeah, going back here.
Water only would go up twenty-six to thirty-nine percent. Lost on which which numbers.
I need this line.
But, so, oh, I'm sorry, and those were not options? Those are, those are.
Customers, excuse me, customers, I apologize. Customers, not.
So nobody's going up two hundred percent?
I didn't say two hundred percent, I said a hundred percent, in the mid-nineties and a and a hundred and some percent. For their, for their water portion. Unless I'm reading that incorrectly.
That's what I'm not, that's what I'm not understanding.
Sure, so if a if a person is currently paying, let's just take customer A, if they're paying thirty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents now, their new, their new water total is going to be seventeen dollars additionally to that, plus an additional fifteen dollars. So if you add the fifteen and the seventeen onto the thirty-five, you get approximately in the mid-ninety percent increase.
Look at it over just the current water bill, but when you look at over the current total versus the new total, it's only a six percent increase? So I'm I'm lost on how.
No, I'm I'm talking about percent increase, the sewer's not, not changing.
And I.
Forty-nine percent for water.
Yeah, I'm I'm just looking at current total versus new total, looking at current water versus.
Adding both of the fees.
Adding both of the new fees together.
That's where.
You can, you can look at it your way also, I'm not, I won't global with you.
All right, I, I, okay.
Yeah, I I won't.
Something to consider in regards to to your point, Trustee Hudson, is that the the homeowner, no matter who who they are and in what bracket they are in water user, they will pay that increase off of their property tax bill to cover it. Maybe not at that, at what you're considering a hundred percent increase, but their taxes will go up to also cover that as as a whole. So either way, it it doesn't eliminate the the rise in cost for it, it's just determining at what portion and and at what percentage each part will get covered.
Trustee Jan Miller.
I'd like to make a comment. I, I think that I've heard from residents in my district that they're not happy with the water bill increase. There happened to be confusion about an increase in the sewer bill, and it was previously said that there was going to be a ten percent increase in the sewer bill. Can you comment on that?
Yes, and actually, when we sent out a, an informational insert into the last round of utility bills, we included some information on the rate increase that was coming through. There was an error in it that I should have caught that said that there was also consideration of a ten percent increase in the in the sewer bill, and that that is not correct. It was, I'm not sure exactly why the error was made, I'm still trying to figure that out so that it doesn't happen again, but, yeah, but it was something I should have, I I should have caught when it went out. I did, I proofread it, and it just didn't click with me when I, when I went through it, so that was an error, and I apologize for any confusion that occurred because of that.
Okay, so, thank you for clarifying that. So there is no increase in the sewer. There is a increase in the water bill, forty-nine percent. It's a done deal, and all we're talking about right now is the PFP and how that should be billed. Currently, it's not on the water bill. We're already asking the residents to up the ante on the water bill as well as industry, and I think that's enough, you know, on a water bill. The PFP stands on the tax bill, and I believe it should stay there. Thank you.
Why should it stay there?
They have enough increase already on the water bill.
But then you're, so you're spreading it, so on your argument, then you're willing to spread that increase to those that are not on the water utility? That's what it'll be if it's on the tax.
That's where it is now.
Right. They will pay that increase of basically almost twelve percent through their, through their property taxes, just for the PFP increase of five thirty-seven to six hundred, and then up to six hundred and eighty-three after that, will be spread across all property taxes, whether you're on the utility or not.
Understood, and we pay school taxes regardless of whether we have children in the school district. I I don't, if that's the way we've been billing it, I think trying to switch it is going to be too confusing.
But the argument for the possibility of switching some of it, part of it, or none of it, but for part of it or some of it is that it allows use of the allowable levy increase for other items like road repair, additional fire and safety personnel, because if we take it from our general fund, then our increase in levy is limited and is chewed up almost by the increase in this water utility, PFP cost as it stands now. So you're basically continuing to handcuff us in inability to increase costs or to put more budget monies towards costs, rather than put it out for loan and for debt to cover more road repair, or possibly the need or the addition of police or fire personnel? Just a consideration, I'm not saying you're right or wrong, it's just a fact, is all I'm saying, Trustee Miller. So it's just, as you think about this, this is all part of that consideration, at least it is when I think about it.
Okay. I do have some additional information along those lines. Also, we did some, some research into what other communities are doing, this is not an exhaustive list, it was what we're able to find out, and the information we'll get back, we got responses from fourteen communities in the area, and and actually, about half of them currently collect the public fire protection on their, out of their property tax levy, half of them collected on the water bill. So there's a, it's it's not, neither model is uncommon, and and both of them can work. The, as as President Walter alluded, the decision tonight will have impacts on the, on the twenty-twenty-two budget. The, and I've outlined a little bit of of what those look like if seventy-five percent of the PFP is is direct billed, that's equivalent to to five point seven firefighters or or for patrol officers, or if the the Village Board looked for property tax reductions, it would be a reduction of fifty-seven dollars for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, or ninety-seven thousand dollars, or ninety-seven dollars for a six hundred thousand dollar home. And I I won't bore you with reading through the columns, you can, you can see them, but, and obviously, at fifty percent, the savings are, or the the impacts are are a little bit less, at twenty-five percent, they're they're less than that. And I I guess I I would say that, I think I should point out that as we're starting preparations for the twenty-twenty-two budget, there are a number of of budget challenges that are before us. In the June meeting, the the Fire Chief was here talking about some of the long-term needs in the Fire Department. I know the Police Chief would like to, at some point, before we get too far into the budget process, appear before you as well and and talk about some of the needs in the in the Police Department at GGF. Earlier this evening, we were talking about some of the information technology needs that are out there. We're seeing some costly trends in our employee healthcare expenses, which will impact the budget, so there will be some difficult choices in the, in the twenty-twenty-two budget. And not to say that this isn't a difficult choice, and not to say that if if you pick one of these options, that everything, everything will be easy and will go away, but but it is some background that I think the Board should have as you're you're making this And then finally, the last slide that I had is, I did lay out some options. These are not the only options that the Village Board has has before you. There is a draft resolution in the packet for tonight, and you can plug in the language in here in in any of those, or you can take no action. Another, another option that, in in retrospect to listening to the discussion, that I could have put in here as well, is you could pick an option of of basically capping the levy contribution at the five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that it currently is, is at, and putting any additional increases on the direct bills. I didn't run the numbers to show what the impacts of that would be, but they would be somewhat less than than what you saw on the slides for the, for the twenty-five percent option, so. And there's a, there's a variety of other in-between options that you could take. I would say that if it is something that the Village Board is looking to implement for the twenty-twenty-two budget, that the timing is such that tonight is, is, I would never say never, or that, you know, if if I get direction from the Village Board, well, no, come on back in August and and give us some different analysis or different options, we'll do our best to do that and make that happen, but the time is getting very short on this issue, and I would suggest that if the the Village Board is looking to do this and have it in place for the twenty-two budget, that that action would be appropriate tonight.
That increase from six hundred thousand to roughly five thirty-seven that we're paying now is eleven point seven percent, so just figure twelve percent, or cut to twenty-five and a half roughly, if you're looking for numbers to quickly go through your mind with. So what we're showing in a twenty-five percent increase, I would look at it as a twelve and a half percent increase, just to kind of, if you look, and that's if we cap it, if we would, if the discussion would move towards possibly capping it at where it's covered now within the general fund, and any increases in twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three would then go to the water utility. But from twenty-twenty-two, from five thirty-seven to six hundred thousand, that's twelve percent, or eleven point seven.
Trustee Rick Miller.
I can't remember, does, does our decision on this impact the rate from the PSC at all, our differ, our rate? So that's, proposed forty-nine percent is going to be pretty close to what the increase will be, period?
Correct.
Okay, no matter what the decision is made here.
This is, this is kind of baked into what the PSC is looking at, the the decision for the Village Board is really how 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 the village is going to pay this to the water utility, either through property taxes or direct bills on the, on the, the utility bills that go out once a quarter.
And the, the example at the slide right before this, where you had property tax on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home and a six hundred thousand dollar home, I understand that that would be a decrease, however, we're talking about budget-type items here, and it's really, we're we're looking to reutilize those funds more than reduce the tax levy.
I I think, and it's, it's difficult without, without having all of the departmental budget requests in, without going through all the revenue estimates, I I think largely I would say that that statement is accurate. I would say that at that seventy-five percent level, there's more potential for the Board to, as you're prioritizing and making policy decisions. to, as you're prioritizing and making policy decisions, not that you would take the entire four hundred and forty-eight thousand and, and have a forty, fifty-seven dollar property tax credit, but there, there would be, there, I believe there would be the potential at that level to have some sort of a, of a property tax savings for folks.
And the other question is, let's say that we do a fifty percent this year. Is, does that impact future decisions, as in, can we come back next year and say, well, we're going to increase it to seventy-five percent?
Yes, that is, that is a possibility. Uh, the, uh, in, in this past case, just for efficiency purposes, the, the public fire protection fee application was submitted to the PSC along with the overall rate increase application. But we can, at any point, without going through the full rate review, also submit an application for a modification of the PFP, and they'll run those numbers, and it's a, it's a less costly and easier application to get through than, than the, than the entire rate review.
When you had the, the different municipalities up here, I didn't see any that had a hybrid solution. So are they really all or nothing on this?
That, that is, and actually, Matthew reached out and contacted just to confirm that, and I believe all seven of them are, are entirely on the, the water bill. Thank you.
The only thing I would add, Trustee Miller, is that while it is technically an option under the present state of these statutes, the legislature over the last number of years has been fairly aggressive, and when they start to see too many folks shifting from one source to another source, they have been fairly quick to shut those down. This one has continued to survive, even though it's been utilized. And so that, that suggests that they're relatively comfortable with this shift. But you never know, and, and they have been fairly aggressive at, at trying to shut those types of things down. So while it is an option now, it may or may not be, depending on what the legislature does.
For those who are on the board or new to the board, this is not the first time this has been brought forward to this body. There's been other administrators that have brought it forward as suggestions to move it from the general fund to the water utility. When those discussions have come up, it's usually fallen into two camps. Those that support it on the water utility, because those that are on the utility get the biggest benefit of the fire protection. Their insurance for their homes is a little bit lower, and they have a quick access and more ability to, to, to save their homes when there's a fire in, in a watered area. The other argument is of those that aren't in a service also get the benefit of the fire department. So those are always the two camps that you get, that they should pay for it under property taxes because they too benefit from the service that the fire department provides. And it's not always putting out fires. In most cases, a large percentage of the calls are rescue or emergencies to personal homes. So there's two ways to look at it, and that's usually where it falls when we've seen these discussions in the past. Trustee Baum.
So would the motion be a two-part motion, one to accept the seventy-nine or one, one to accept the forty-nine and one to decide whatever percentage?
No, it's just for resolution only. If you read the resolution, it's in regards to just what percentage is going from the current, uh, fund of, for, for fire protection to, off the general fund to the water bill.
Trying to get that.
It's not anything to do with the increase to the water utility from the, from the PFC.
So you just need a motion as to what number we're moving to the water bill?
And, and the way the, the way the resolution was drafted, and there are other ways of doing this, but what, what we drafted and presented is that it would set the municipal payment, the part charged to the property taxes. So if you wanted to keep that at current levels, you would set that at five thirty-seven. If you wanted to, um, charge twenty-five percent on the water bills, you would set it at four forty-eight. If you wanted to split it, you would set the municipal payment at two ninety-nine. And if you want to move seventy-five percent of that cost over to the water bills, you would set the, the municipal payment, the property tax portion, at one forty-nine, six sixty.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we set the municipal portion to the one forty-nine, six sixty, so we move seventy-five percent to the water bill.
Motion made and seconded at discussion. Trustee Baum.
I have been on this board for years, and I have been trying to raise these numbers for years, and it's always shot down. I'm just going to go out there, let's start raising it, let's get it to where we need it to be. Costs are continuing to go up. We need to find a way to resolve this. It's before us again. We need to respond to it, and we need to set a precedent.
Further discussion? My response to you is, I think we've had more discussions here on just pure utility itself in trying to raise the, the water utility rates, and not as much discussion on focusing the, this changeover of the fire protection off property taxes to the water rate. Since both are occurring right now at the same time, I tend to lean a little bit towards Trustee Hudson's argument, where when you look at the numbers, it's, it's not huge dollars, but try to explain that to somebody that, that, you know, only has a few dollars left at the end of every month to cover whatever bills they need to, to cover. And there, there's a fair amount of, of families out there that exist just in that manner. Since we were already looking at a forty-nine percent increase on the water utility minimum, I would prefer, and, and I would support if we would lock the current rate at five thirty-seven for where it's been and where it has been paid previously, and any increases going forward would then switch to the water utility. That helps to buffer that percentage that's already going to be there and doesn't make it as drastic of a jump for the water utility users. For what you're suggesting, you're, you're getting up into that hundred percent plus range for some water utility users to, to look at as an increase for cost of their water. So that, that's why I, I won't support yours, and I would look at more of supporting what, you know, as I outlined, as I outlined it. Further discussion? Tough decision, guys. This is probably one of the hardest ones we've had in a while. That's what makes it fun.
Fun?
Fun, yeah. This is what we're here for. This is what we're here to do. Trustee Baum.
So the, in the past, we left the majority of this or left it all on the, the fire, fire protection. We left it on the, um, tax bill because people could deduct it off their income tax.
That's part of the argument.
And going forward, we can no longer do that. So that's being dropped off of our personal property taxes. And at seventy-five percent, it's fifteen dollars in your scenario A, B, and C. That's, that's a total of fifteen dollars.
Per quarter?
Per quarter, so sixty bucks a year. I understand that there are those who are on tight shoestring budgets, but either I put it in one pocket or I put it in the other pocket, it's still the same fifteen dollars a year, is it not?
One spread out a little further? One spread out amongst more than they would be just for pure utility?
As, as we're spreading out over the entire community.
Correct.
Versus.
Just those on the water utility.
And, and I'm, majority of my district is up in the farm country, and we don't have agents in our, our neighborhood, so.
But you do have fire protection.
We do have fire protection, but we don't have the infrastructure that's necessary, so I gotta support those people because I'm from that area.
Okay, understandable. Further discussion? No further discussion?
Being it's a cost, it's roll call?
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Nay.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Nay.
Trustee Myers?
Nay.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Nay.
Trustee Peeper?
No.
President Walter?
No.
Motion fails.
Six-two. Next motion.
I will try a different motion, and I will make a motion to use the, I gotta back, gotta get back to my first page here. Hold on.
Fun, the screen shows the different breakouts.
To, your, your preference was no action?
No, my preference was to, to cap it at five thirty-seven and increases to go to the water utility.
That's the number I'm looking for. Cap it at five thirty-seven and move, and do the rest of the water utility.
Again? Motion made and seconded at discussion. I would, I would be stronger in your camp, Trustee Baum, if it wasn't already for the substantial increase that we're already having to experience for the water utility. If, if previous boards would have acted minimally and progressively over the past eleven years, it would have helped to buffer that, but there were a strong contingency that we're against it for a lot of reasons, not only for that water rate increase, but for even for this at any ability whatsoever. And it always seemed to be a, as I remembered, a thin majority, but enough to, to not allow it to occur. In this case, now we're down to the point of where we have to increase because otherwise we're out of, call it out of spec as a utility. And then on top of that, we are looking for ways to allow us, different ways to cover upcoming costs that we're aware of in our general fund. I think in this manner, it, it helps to keep that's been paid for previously and, in the camp that's been paying for it. And any increase beyond that allows us at least a twelve percent, roughly, we'll see what the numbers come in, that we can help cover some additional costs that we have, whether it be for medical expenses that we know are coming or for some of the other things that the administrator had mentioned.
Sure. And I am fine with how we're breaking this out, this, this format, I'm fine with that, but we have to approve something going up.
Right. And the PFC is looking for us to, to move in one direction or another, otherwise this resolution would not be in front of us. They need this as part of their decision-making process. Trustee Myers.
Continuing with hindsight, which gets you no place. Steve, couldn't this board have approved with a PSC increase of ten percent each year? Or an increase, forget the amount of percent? Yes, yes. I think that's allowable.
They, they allow for what they call a simplified rate increase that can, I believe, take place on an annual basis. That typically is a, a cost of living adjustment, effectively, somewhere in that two to three percent, yeah.
Rather than ten, three. But there's your buffer in regard to whatever we end up maybe in the.
I don't know. That reminds me of when the, the, the tax, the taxes on your gas used to go up automatically without anybody voting on it. And I'm not in great favor of automatic increases without this body looking at it and seeing if it's really required at that time or if it should be something different.
But you would, you would still vote on that.
You vote on it each year, so it's not an automatic, like, like you're using as an example for the gas tax.
Further discussion? Trustee Knight Rider.
Just two things. Steve, did anybody take, if the last increase was in two thousand and ten, is that?
That was the, the last rate application that went to the PSC was two thousand and ten. According to the records I saw, there was one of those small, one or two percent increases, I believe, in two thousand and fourteen.
Okay. Has, has any, anybody, and I know it's too late for tonight, but has anybody gone back that far to just, to just show people, you know, why we're going up, why we're going up, but to take cost of living each year and say, if the board would have done this each year, our increase today would only be twenty-five percent or twenty percent?
We did, in the, in the flyer that we sent out, we did include the inflationary numbers. I, I didn't do an analysis of saying, what if the board had done certain things? I, although in responding to some, we did get some resident calls and, and emails. And one of the things I have been saying is that, yes, in, in my opinion, it would have been better if the board had adopted multiple increases, smaller increases during that period of time. However, we would still be at that revenue requirement amount that the PSC found this year. So, you know, we would still need the one point two million dollars. And, and it, people maybe would have felt it a, a little bit less over, over that, that, you know, eleven-year gap with our last rating, rate application, but we would have ended up in the same place. And, and I, I don't think people necessarily like to hear this when they see their bill going up, but to some extent, it means that they've been getting a real, a, a deal on water in the past. And, and, you know, they've been getting it at a discount and, and probably paying less than, than what the village should have been paying or should have been charging previously.
The, um, the funding that we got recently from federal government, the one point two, the one point three that came in?
Bunch of.
Has any determination been made? We have not determined, right, how we're going to use that.
No, that, the village board hasn't, we, I haven't brought that to the village board, and the village board hasn't discussed it yet.
It could be applied here. But that, yeah, that's what I'm.
It'd be using the budget.
The, 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 it could be. I mean, it could be used for, uh, for water or sewer infrastructure.
That right now.
The problem is that that's, you only, we're only going to get that two years. We'll get, we got some this year, we'll get some next year, and that would take care of that revenue shortfall for that period, and then we'd be right back where we, where we started, and the, the money would be gone.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Trustee Myers.
All right. Brian, when you, I was talking about the increase, and you talked about whatever the phrase was, but that doesn't have to go before the PSC to get that approved, though, correct or incorrect?
Correct. That's, that's the simplified aspect of it. They, they allow the, up to the three percent, you know, just kind of an annual increase. If we were going to do something above that number in any year, then we would have to go back.
Thank you again.
Any further discussion? Trustee Jan Miller?
This is something that should be brought up every year, water bill, PFP, that we need to discuss, and whether or not we need to vote or not. It's something that everybody uses. It's important. Other than the fire chief talking about perhaps utilizing more people, we didn't have an opportunity to hear from the police chief. We don't have all of the information about shortfalls that we might be, be coming up in the budget, and who else needs to tighten their belt, right? So, um, I, I'm still sticking with the no action. Let's get the water bill where we need it to be. It's a shock to our residents, and I think we need to be prudent about the increases. They should be, it should be looked at every year. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Trustee Hudson.
If we don't do anything tonight, does that preclude us from taking action next year?
No. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Nay.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Nay.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Nay.
Trustee Peeper?
No.
President Walter?
Aye.
Aye.
So it happens when somebody can hear.
Next. No, it doesn't pass. Motion fails on a tie. Any other?
I'd like to make a motion. Can we do that?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I move that we
I move that we go an option for no action, an entire 598, 640 will be paid from the property taxes.
Seconded for discussion.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, Trustee Peeper.
But this is that 598, that's going to go up by, what, 100 and how many thousand?
683. It's going to go from 537 to 600, and then from 600 to 683.
But for this year, it's 598.
Correct, from 537. 11%.
And I should note, actually, that that's not something the village board acts on, that's something the PSC sets, so if there's no action taken, we will have to pay that out of our property tax levy.
Sure, she's done.
We're all looking for that.
Oh, stop it, you.
Trustee Baum?
So if we take no action, then we go to the other slide, which says we can't do anything with the police department, we can't do anything with the fire department, we have no finances to address those issues.
That's probably a little drastic for a point, but without having anything in front of us as what's being proposed from the different departments, it's a possibility. It limits, it limits where we can, where other funds can go, because we're only going to get a certain percentage of increase on our levy, and we already know that whatever that is, that this increase in itself is 11.7%. That is not the overall budget, that's just this portion, so it's not going to chew up 11, you know, percent of our total budget, but it will take a portion of it from other opportunities or other increases, one already known as the health insurance.
I could just add that the levy limit increase at the maximum last year was, I believe, 160, 165,000 dollars, so if, that would be the maximum amount we could increase property taxes, and then, under the no action scenario, about 65,000 of that would have to go to the increased public fire protection fee, leaving, you know, again, if it's using last year's numbers, you know, leaving about 95,000 for all other village services.
And that's what I am concerned about, is the limitations that we're going to have on other portions of our budget that really need to free up finances. We know everything else around us is going up.
Or increased borrowing.
Yeah, well, geez, oh man, I've been fighting that for 20 years now. So I don't want to increase borrowing, I'd like to have more revenue, more flexibility to do something when it's budget time again. By taking no action, we start to limit ourselves on what we can do during the budget process.
You're limiting yourselves out of the gate, yes.
What?
Right out of the gate, yes, before we even get there.
Yeah, so I can't support the no action.
Be here a while.
Still got three more to go after.
Well, since it's not my motion, I can't modify it, can I?
You can make a motion to amend.
I make a motion to amend. Just don't know what to say. Oh, stop.
What would you like to do? What are you thinking?
Do not like that huge increase on the water bill.
Well, the big increase that, put it this way, the increases that Steve was showing was putting 75% of that cost to the water bill. At the last failed motion of locking it at 537, it only took about, at the 25% increase, half of that, so if it was, call it, it was a $15 increase, it'd be seven and, seven and a half dollars, seven and a quarter, whatever, so it's that much less. We already know we're going to have a 49% increase just in the water rate alone, and I thought it was more amenable for the 12%, not that I liked the 12%, but at least it allowed us some wiggle room for other services that are also being looked at as part of the general fund, and without any coverage of the general fund, right, then it either falls to capital or it falls to not having it.
For information, I just ran the numbers here at the 12% number that President Walter mentioned, that column that says 75% of PFP, if we change that to 12%, it would be about $2.58 per quarter. At 25%, it would be $5.16 per quarter.
Okay, so I modify my motion to
You're making a motion to amend?
Or, yes, well, I'm
You're the second, so you're making a motion to amend Trustee Jan Miller's motion.
Trustee Miller's motion to change it to 12%.
That's what we had before.
No, no.
Yes, we did, because that's what the lock at 537 was.
We do some other calculations, we have more options than
You just wrote this one down and then come up with another.
Fairness to Village Administrator, you've been provided a lot of options in regards to how to break it out.
But, obviously, Trustee Baum is in one camp.
He is in the
I are in another camp.
Correct.
There's got to be a camp somewhere closer to our camp.
That's why I thought at least covering the cost as it's been covered previously and capping it was an option that both camps could live with, but obviously not, because it failed, so now I can't see, if you voted against 12%, why would you vote for 25%?
No, I'm not voting for 25%.
I'm just saying, the next option that's available after this, besides, if this motion fails, would be 25%, because you can't go back to 12%, because it's already been put on the floor and failed.
I am in favor of the capping.
Right, effectively, if you wanted to go back to the 12%, you would vote this motion down and then do a motion to reconsider the 12% motion.
I am in favor of capping it, I am.
Hey, you voted against it last time.
Well, it also came with a
It's a learning session, so.
Yes, it is.
I don't
Are you looking still to amend the motion to increase by 12%? Or are you looking for this motion to go through as presented?
I don't like any of this.
You got to go somewhere. So you, right now, you have the floor because you're wanting to make a motion to amend. Do you still want to make a motion to amend? You withdraw? Thank you. Further discussion, Trustee Hudson.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, and I'll need help with the wording, so I'd appreciate it. I'd like to move 10% of the PFP this year, the next subsequent four years, up to a cap of 50%.
Motion. Motion made and seconded, question, does that then not allow it to be changed for the next four years?
The next
If this change, if this motion is approved?
Well, it would go, it would automatically go into effect, but obviously, a subsequent board could take action to
Remove it or
Remove that or change it.
Okay. So everybody understands.
I would add, I believe we would have to, and we could do this, but I believe we would have to submit an application each year to the PSC to adjust and move the 10% over, and that's possible, but I just think procedurally, have to do that.
I'm fine with that.
And we had a second on that?
Yes, me.
Okay, and you said for discussion, do you have a point that you'd like to bring forward for discussion, Trustee Myers?
Steve helped me to address that issue, but thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Further discussion, for the motion to amend, Trustee Baum.
Yeah, what are the, can you go through all the complications with having this go through the PFC every year for the next five years?
Was that, yeah, five, yeah, 10%.
This year plus the next four years, I took it as five years.
Yeah, anyway you cut it, it's five, yeah, one and four, that's five.
Yeah.
There is a cost to going through the application process, as I mentioned earlier, it's not as in-depth as the, as the rate application process that we went through now, but there is, there is some work involved. I believe, at least the first couple of years we did this, we would, we would need to hire somebody like Baker Tilly to assist us, they, when you submit the application, it's not just a letter that says, hey, we'd like to increase it, they do the whole review of all of your costs, all of the revenues related to the fire protection system, and you have to pay the PSC to do that, so there is a cost associated with it. There is also, and we talked in GGF earlier today about acquiring, beginning the process of acquiring a new financial management system, there is, there is some cost usually in adjusting the bills to do that, and again, it's not a significant cost, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it does, you know, there are costs to making those changes, and that's sort of the doubt, you know, the, I think the positive or the benefit of doing it incrementally is it's less of an immediate impact on the utility customers, the cost of it is, there's just more, there's more cost of doing it, so there are those two factors.
And we already know that our costs are going up 12% this year and 12% next year, so by setting it at 10% this year and 10% next year, we're already starting out in a hole, and we really don't know what it's going to be years three, four, and five, so.
They don't know about the hole, but you'd be in a hole if you did nothing, I think, more so.
But if we, but if we went back to the freeze it and 12% like we were
Right, you're You're egging over 2%.
Yeah, but I don't want to get in the hole if I know where I'm supposed to go, 12%.
It's a good gesture, I'm more concerned about what that true cost is.
Yeah.
And are we just going back to neutral and losing it in the 2% in the cost for the Baker Tilly and the PFC?
That's why I'm concerned about that, and I'm not sure I want to support that motion.
But it is a good gesture, in the right direction. Trustee Peeper.
What about, I don't even know how I can phrase this, because it was discussed in a closed session.
Then you can't say it.
I feel like that has a bearing, that if we were updated on that, the decision-making process on this would be much easier.
The item that we discussed in closed session affects the 49%, it doesn't affect the PFP.
Which is going to be there no matter what. Trustee Myers.
Steve, the fact that you call it in regard to Baker, whatever their name is, sorry about that, yes, it would have to do something, the same thing they did for us for this rate increase that we have before the PSC, but I don't think that that would come into effect in future years, because the procedure is pretty much the same that you're utilizing from the year before. I haven't seen these figures, so I'm speaking somewhat, not knowing for sure.
I do know the process for applying for a change to the public fire protection fee is easier, I haven't gone through that with only that piece in the past, so I do know that it is more than just a one-page form asking for an adjustment, but, and I would think it would be something, if we do it, if we're doing it five years in a row, we'd be able to get, we'd get better at it, it would get easier, but, but I don't, I can't tell you exactly what is involved or how much it would cost.
The only reason I said it is because you said there would be a cost each particular year, but if we don't really know the cost, it could be substantially less than, than the original amount that we came in with, per se. Whatever.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Brian, a question for you, first of all, just a comment, we're going around here a long time before we find an answer, we are pretty close on one, the motion that we had that said we would leave the 598,000 on property tax, and any future increase would go against the water bill, am I, is that the one that lost?
Yes.
Or the 537?
Yes.
So anything above the 537 would go onto the water bill?
Correct.
So to bring that back would be a, somebody that voted no would have to bring that motion back to reconsider?
Reconsideration, yes.
Correct, so somebody on the winning side, which in that case would be somebody who voted no, would have to make a motion to reconsider that motion.
So in order to do that, would we have to clear all the other motions and amended motions off the floor first?
Correct, yes.
Just went down and
I'm willing to bring it back for reconsideration, because as I'm sitting here now, it becomes the most practical one, I think, and I think it's the only one that might make it through here.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? No further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote for the motion to amend, which is to do a 10% increase for the next five years. To the, from property tax to the water bill.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Baum?
Nay.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Nay.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Nay.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Nay.
Trustee Peeper?
No.
President Walter?
Nay. Now we're back to the motion, as it was originally stated, because that motion failed, and that motion, as it was originally stated, was to do option of no action, and the entire 598, 640 will be paid from property taxes. Is there any further discussion on that original motion? Discussion, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
No.
Trustee Baum?
No.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
No.
Trustee Myers?
No.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Nay.
President Walter?
Nay.
Motion fails.
Did you get Trustee Peeper in there?
I have a check mark, because
Okay, good. All right, thank you. All right, that motion fails.
I know.
You know how to do that.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Well, let's get a whirl here.
First, you have to make a motion to reconsider.
That's, that would be my only
Right, at that time, then we have to pass the motion to reconsider, and then we bring up the motion as it was last, under consideration from discussion, correct?
At this time, I would make a motion to reconsider.
And the motion to reconsider is to keep the current rate on the property taxes at 537 or to cap it, and any increases from there would then be put to the water bill?
Yes.
That is the motion that he's asking for reconsideration. Is there any discussion? Do we have, if we had a second, who was that? Thank you. Any discussion on that motion for reconsideration, Trustee Hudson?
The only concern I have about this solution is this is a one-year solution, we're going to be having exactly the same discussion next year.
With, even with the other option that failed, it could be the same way, it could, I mean, they would have, the board would have the ability to do so. Trustee Jan Miller.
Will we have to reapply every year, or how will that work?
No, this would, this would set the amount paid off of the property taxes, we would, if this motion is approved, we would insert that into the resolution that was in the packet, and provide that to the PSC.
So that's covered in this year's cost.
And then no further PSC applications would be necessary unless, as long as the village board wanted to keep that property tax portion at 537. The only reason that any additional PSC action would be necessary is if you wanted to either put more of it back on the property tax or less of it.
Right, right now, we're saying this is the total amount that we're willing to place on property tax for fire protection. Further discussion on the motion to reconsider, this is just for the reconsideration of bringing the motion back. No further discussion? Do we need to do a roll call for that? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Always raise your hands. One opposed. Motion passes. Motion passes. Now, the motion at, we are going to reconsider or take discussion on is to cap the, the amount for the fire protection from the general fund at 537, and any increases from that point would then be put to the water utility. That is the motion for reconsideration. Any discussion on that motion? Trustee Rick Miller?
Well, I was just going to say, I think we've tried every other option here, and this one is the second time around. And, and nobody is willing to put, to keep everything on the property taxes. Nobody's willing to put 25% on the water bill. This is fair, you know? This, this is a fair balance on the whole thing, and any increases after this year's budget, 2021 budget, will now go on the water bill. And I think that's, that's pretty fair. So I hope the motion passes.
Further discussion? Trustee Jan Miller?
So we have, if we do it this way, we'll have available funds? Is that correct?
Yes. It, it doesn't, it doesn't reduce the amount that we're paying out of property taxes, but we avoid the increase. So the, what it means is that you're, you're basically keeping the village board's discretion over how to use the, the property tax levy, funds that we get for the 2022 budget, that you're not committing those to, to the increase in the PFP.
Okay. And those funds would be in a separate account?
They're handled with a line item.
Yeah. There is a line item in the fire department budget for the, the PFP.
Okay. And it'll stay in the fire department?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yes.
At 537.
Thank you.
Further discussion? The only thing that, that I would say to this board as village president is remember how this feels. And we've put ourselves there from previous decisions, and we need to consider, even though we, we don't like to increase a cost to our residents, I think minimal costs at a slower pace are easier to handle than one big cost. Now, we've talked about several of those options, but I'm more talking about the regular rate increases rather than always having to come through with a 50 or better percentage, which always looks worse and is a harder hit. And it's hard to talk about past years and the breaks you've gotten because, you know what? It's not like the, it's been put in a bank. There's been other places I'm sure it's been spent. So just, just remember that this decision is hard, and this is what we're here to do. But in order to offset it to this point, there are ways to go about it. Further discussion? There's no further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Peiper?
In honor of art, no.
President Walter?
Aye. Motion passes. All right. That takes care of unfinished business. And then takes us to new business. We start with new business item A, Park and Recreation Director, job description. For more information and background on that, also, village administrator?
Thank you. As I think you're all aware, we received some kind of bittersweet news last week that our Parks and Rec director, Mark Schrader, has indicated he's going to retire from the village as of October 1st. So this is the first step in the process of, of filling his position. Actually, and we took a little bit of an unusual step, we took this to GGF this evening. It was reviewed by GGF, and, but because of the, we want to get the process started quickly, we also put it on the village board for approval. So we'd appreciate your consideration of the, of the updates to the Park and Rec director job description.
Motion or question? Do we have a question?
Motion to approve, Dennis.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Trustee Rick Miller?
Yeah, this went through General Government and Finance as Administrator Kreckle said today, and it was recommended, approval three to nothing at, at GGF.
Thank you. Further discussion? Trustee Hudson?
I have some questions about the process, and then I also have some questions about the job description. How, how would you like to handle those questions?
Anyway, you want to bring them forward?
So as, as I read the process, we're going to be posting the position for only three weeks, is that correct?
That is correct. We're, we're trying to get the position filled as close to October 1st as possible. So we, we have a plan to post it for three weeks. We could adjust that if, if we don't receive adequate applications.
I'd, I'd like to see an indefinite posting. So, and then do, do we know the staff that's going to sit in and do the interview with the candidates?
Typically, what we would do for a position like this is we would set up a couple of different interview panels in some cases, depending upon if there's, especially if there's internal candidates, if there are no internal candidates, we might have one panel that would include some of the, the Parks and Rec staff. If, I typically would have another panel that would include peers, other department heads that would participate in an interview, and then possibly a, a third panel that would include myself, and in this case, somebody from the Parks and Rec Commission, and perhaps a village trustee to, to get some input into the process as well.
So, so, thank you, and, and pardon my confusion. So when, when I read the process, it looks to me like we, we post the position for three to four weeks, and then no matter how many resumes we get, we decide on the best only three or four resumes? And then from those resumes, we bring in the candidate to interview for, for one interview with this panel? Am I not understanding that correctly?
I think you're, you're correct. We would get, we would solicit applications, and then we would select candidates from those applications to bring in for the interview panels. You know, again, for this level, for a department head level position, and for many of the other positions, you know, we, we typically use a, a multi-panel process to get, to get a variety of different types of feedback.
So, again, I apologize for my confusion. Multi-panel process, is that one interview, or is that different candidates interviewing with different panels?
So.
Do you understand the question?
Yeah, yeah. So if you were the candidate, if you were one of the candidates and trustee Myers was another candidate, you would come in first and, and you would interview with, with the panel, with the Parks and Rec staff, and they would provide feedback. They would evaluate the candidates. And then you would go to a second interview panel that would include some of the other department heads and staff. And then a third panel that would include myself, maybe a member of the Parks and Rec Commission, a trustee, probably somebody from outside, maybe a Parks and Rec director from one of the neighboring communities that we would invite in to get their perspective as well.
So the, the candidates would all be interviewed three separate times is, is what you're saying?
Usually in a, in a one day or, you know, over a few hours, yeah.
Okay. And after that initial one-day process, so we would do that with the top three or four candidates, and from that pool, we would declare, we would compare our notes?
Yeah. The, and our Support Services Manager, our new Support Services Manager, Aaron Hearn, would be the facilitator, kind of managing the process. When we have done this for, for some of the other positions that we've filled in, in the, in the village, we collect evaluation sheet scores. I usually like to talk with each one of the panels and get a little bit deeper into, what did you think, or your thoughts, and, and gather all that information together. For this particular position, according to village ordinance, it's a position that's appointed by the village president and then approved by the village board. So that would be built into the processes as well.
So the, the candidates are, there is really no, I mean, there is, but there is no second interview, so we're never, never narrowing our pool of candidates from, say, three to two, or four to two, or, or five to two. There's no finalists, I guess is what I'm saying. Every, once we get, we're choosing our finalists via looking at the resumes only.
You know, at, at this point, it's been a while since we've gotten enough quality candidates for a position that, that that's been an issue. If, you know, it's, in today's labor market, it's, 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 it's difficult to find enough candidates, so.
Yes, but, but we compound that problem by only posting the position for three weeks. We're, we're compounding our own problems.
You know, and, and actually, and you're correct, we would not take it off of the website, for example, until it's, until it's filled. But we would, after three weeks, evaluate, okay, what candidates do we have, and evaluate them and, and see who we're bringing in for interviews.
And then they come back and they meet President Walter for the, what, like a meet and greet type thing?
I'm envisioning that. I haven't had a chance to talk with President Walter yet, as, as our paths were disconnected last week, but, but yes.
And then I, I also have some questions about the, the job, the job interview. It's, I, I understand that it's pay range 19. What does that translate to in dollars?
I have to ask our.
And we are not, we are not requiring a college degree for this position. It says we would prefer it, but it is not required for, for a director position.
That is the, that is the case in, in this case, and I would bore this position and, and thinking about, at, at various organizations I've been in, and, and the career paths that some parks and rec directors follow, I, I can think of some very good park and rec directors that have not completed a college degree.
We're, we're also, we're also requiring a valid Wisconsin driver's license, thereby ruling out anybody from any other state. But it, it says it's a requirement, and I, if I were a candidate, I might self-select out of the system.
It's a requirement in the job description. It's not a requirement to gain employment with the village.
Okay. Appreciate that. And then my, my last question is the, we're allowing two years to obtain the certification. I, I did go out and look at the, the website, and I attempted to derive information about the certification, but they've got it locked down fairly tightly. So I can't figure out how many hours it would take to obtain that certification of study. Do we know the answer to that question?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm wondering if Parks and Rec director put more information on what's all involved with that.
So what you're probably referring to, you went on the Wisconsin Park and Rec Association website, password to go in and get that information. As far as how much time, I think it's contained in, through experience. As far as hours, I passed my exam back in the 90s. Certainly requirements have changed, I'm sure, since then.
It, it did say on the website that the requirement to take the exam was a college degree and, and one year of experience, or a high school education and five years of experience.
Okay.
And they would allow you, I assume with a credit card number, to, to, to take the exam. And I, I guess for that kind of money, I, I think two years is being very generous to pass a certification process.
I think, I think it's become pretty common in our function to certify.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'm.
The years that we're giving them to accomplish it is generous.
It's, it's too long. Yeah. My, my fear is they, they would achieve two years of experience, they would get a certification, and then we'd have an open position in two years. I would much rather require somebody to get that within six months if it's a reasonable amount of time. If it's 100 hours of studying, obviously, six months is, is not realistic. But if it's 10 or 20 hours of studying, six months.
I think, I think that maybe it's listed in this state or, that's majority. Somebody wants to, from out of state, I mean, state has a certification program. State as, as equal, is my opinion.
Does it belong to the, the organization, or does it travel with the individual as they go from job to job?
I would say it travels with the individual.
So it's, okay.
Within that state.
In the state, thank you, yeah.
But, but you know, there's a national certification, and I think states have done as a.
What I might suggest on, on that point is a couple of options is, one, we, we could modify the job description and, and reduce it to a year or six months. Or another option, hearing the feedback on that, is you could leave the, the job description at, at two years, so that if there are some extenuating circumstances, or, or there's a candidate that we really, that the village really, really wants, but for some reason, it's going to take more than six months to get that, that, that certification, we could go ahead and hire. And in that, and in that case, it's something we could put into the, the job offer, and we do that on a regular basis as well, that, you know, we want you to get this certification, and we want you to get it within six months.
I didn't, only speaking personally, I can't speak for anybody else. I didn't, I didn't think that the qualifications in order to test for that certification were all that stringent. High school degree and years of experience or, experience is not, deal to, to me.
Mark, am I misremembering, or did you come and interview before the board when you applied for the position when Brett left? And with other candidates that were considered possibilities, right? I mean, you weren't just the only one, there was others that came that same night. And that, that's how I remember it last time, but based on you're going by the, by the ordinance?
The ordinance says in, in 1.03 that, that it is, that this position is appointed by the village president, approved by the village board.
Okay. What year was that, Mark? I appreciate that.
I, I do understand wanting to get the position filled by October 1st. But I would rather go with an empty position, find a great candidate, and try to shoehorn a not-so-great candidate to a position like this.
Right, but some of that comes from trust of, of who's doing the interviewing and who's, you know, going through that process based on the candidates received.
Absolutely, absolutely. But if you, if, if we set a date, you know, three weeks it's up, and we want to hire by October 1st, we might, we might absolutely find a diamond, sure. But as, as you compress that timeframe, that becomes more and more of a task, especially in a job market with 3.9% unemployment.
I guess.
Just a target.
And I guess I would, the flip side of that is I think the longer the process takes, the more likely your good candidates are to accept other positions. You know, is, if, if they're applying and they're looking, the, the best candidates are going to get offers, and if, if the process takes too long, we would lose our, our strongest candidates.
There is a happy medium to be found.
You're talking to administrator that walked in to this position without a village clerk, without a village engineer, and shortly thereafter, without the chief of the fire department. I don't think he wants to experience someone that's not in a seat again, so I think he's just setting a target. It's realistic based against the amount of time that's been allotted before the retirement occurs. I would look at it as a target and not a hard and fast.
And, and I would just also say for the board's reassurance, when, especially for a position that this, that is this important in village operations. You know, I had a, one of my mentors when I was starting in my career said, when you hire someone, think about it like you're marrying someone. You know, it's a, it's a big commitment, and you want to make sure it's the right person. And so I would agree with that 100%. I don't think we want to go through this quickly and get the, the first person who walks through the door. You know, I think it is trying to, trying to balance the speed of the process and, and make sure that we, you know, we were able to move quickly and, and be kind of agile and nimble in the process, but also not jumping at the, the first, first candidate that walks through the door is important, too, so.
Shannon, a second.
Based on any of your questions, trustee Hudson, are you looking to amend the motion or change any parts of, as presented?
Uh, yeah, I, I, again, I'd like it to be posted indefinitely.
There was one interview process where we weren't happy with any of the applicants.
Right.
We let it ride out, because we just didn't get any good applicants. So I think we're setting a target, but we will if we don't get good applicants.
Can we get a definition on what is meant by job description? Is it everything that's in our backup, or is it just purely the description of the duties?
I mean, I read it as it's the job description and, and the rest is up to President Walter. It's his appointment.
I would agree with trustee Miller, but it's just the job description that's up for action.
Everybody understand?
Yep.
Okay. Trustee, Chan Miller?
I have a question about where you're posting this job, besides the website. Where would that be?
With.
C and D, or, you know.
The, I think the most important place is to, to post this, and we may use indeed, we, we do use indeed pretty frequently with our positions. The Wisconsin Park and Rec Association. Haven't talked about whether or not we'd want to advertise it nationally yet. That would be an option. I guess I'd want to see how much that costs with the National Park and Rec Association. I think the main one is the state. There are some other publications, the League of Municipalities post jobs, the Wisconsin City Management's Association post jobs like this. And, and I know that in the industry, that's where people are generally looking. I also, I think Mark does as well, you know, I, I know quite a few people who work for different park and rec departments across the state that I would send it to and say, hey, if you or somebody you know is interested, please take a look at it. So I think that's probably even more important than the, than the posting, to be honest.
I would make a suggestion. What about University of Wisconsin Stevens Point? They have a huge forestry. You know, it's not specifically forestry, but you got trees and parks, and you may be able to get some response there. Just an idea.
Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed?
Yeah.
One opposed. Next item under new business is Resolution 2021 Village Building Cleaning Services Contract with Clean Power LLC, a three-year contract in amount not to exceed $448,648.25.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, Scott is here to give us any information and background that he feels is important in our decision.
I'll skip the overview and just move right to our discussion at Public Works. Discuss this on July 7th. Positive recommendation. There were a couple of points in discussion during the committee meeting that I think are important. First of all, it's important to note that custodian who was hired during this, actually within 12 months, and so we will be budgeting both salary side and also in the contract side to handle that. However, large discussion about the fact that we would not execute, and, I'm sorry, simultaneously, we wouldn't be paying that amount simultaneously. The other thing that committee talked about was that we wanted to have the village attorney review this prior to any signature, and that there was language included with a clause that would allow the village to terminate the contract should future funding.
Okay. Thank you. Village Board, discussion, questions? I have a question. Is this, this is the same company that we've always used previously?
About six years ago, we transferred to Clean Power LLC. We've used the contract.
It's always been three-year contracts as proposed?
It has been in the past, yes.
Was this the company that, oh, around when we went through 2008, were we using them and they held their, their service level for at least two years to whatever it was previously to help us buffer some of that lost revenue? God has merit for me if it is.
I, I am, I am, I answered that incorrectly, I'm not sure.
We are here, Scott. Just kidding. Okay, I was just curious if you remember. And then is this.
Actually, I'm going to, I'm going to answer your question. I think that it may have been JB Janitorial when we first took over.
Okay. And then is this considered an increase from previous year?
Yes, the current year, 2020, is $114,000. Some thousand dollars. However, it is important to note that there's potential of four additional buildings added to this contract, all our new shelter at Fireman's Park. Secondly, the recreation building, formerly the fire department, has been cleaned and paid for outside of. So we're trying. Trustee Rick Miller?
Yes, Scott, refresh my memory. I think these numbers are with our, our full-time custodian, is that right?
Yes, the numbers that we're looking at, Clean Power LLC, 145, 151, that was what we would budget, put into our budget to make sure that we could account for our custodian leaving. Again, that, that's where I go back to the same thing. We wouldn't be paying, it's not, we wouldn't pay a salary.
Right.
And also pay the alternate price.
Right. However, if that person retires, leaves, whatever, this would be the total amount that Clean Power would charge us.
Yes, and then we'd be saving on the salary side.
Okay, thank you.
Well, they figured their percentage of increase into each year. Trustee Chan Miller?
So to add to that, what is the increase year on year?
Total, I mean, the total is 448, 648.5. That's three years of the contract you need.
Understood. What's the increase? It's built in? Three percent, four percent, five percent?
Yeah.
If there, if you're adding four buildings, how many buildings does that equal?
Four, of the four additional buildings would be the new fireman's shelter.
Right, I know that. What are the original buildings? How many altogether?
Eleven.
Thank you.
And year one is 145, 151. Year two is 149, 505.
And we've had them before?
Yes.
Scott, okay. And so they're insured and bonded?
Yes.
And then I wanted to know what you were going to do if the employee actually decided to retire next month? So there would be a gap?
If we had that situation, we would probably have our staff step in and fill that role until we could get into them.
So we got it covered. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Trustee Hudson?
Scott, if I can remember correctly, they will not charge us for cleaning the additional buildings.
You are correct.
Until our employee retires.
They were, we asked for an alternate price for those two buildings.
Thank you.
So we won't make the expenditure of two sides.
Yep.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Myers? Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Dan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thanks, Scott. You're on the next one, too, right?
I am.
Next item under new business is Item C, Resolution 21-2021, Mequon Road Street Lighting Project Contract with Outdoor Lighting Construction Company in amount not to exceed $402,000.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Any information?
Yeah, I, yes. And, and while I went through the other one quickly, I'm going to, I know it's late, but I'm going to give this one it's due. I'm going to start with how we got to today, just as a brief summary. 2019, the energies notified the village that they will no longer maintain the current lighting on Mequon Road, in its current state. They did provide the village with a couple options of a fiberglass or an aluminum, just a standard R shoebox with copperhead fixture. Public Works meetings and planning meetings determined as a burden to staff that we were looking for something a little bit different in the corridor. Provided. To go with a decorative light that's going to give us the feel that we're down in there. As far as the budget is concerned, we worked with Traffic Engineering Services in 2020. Have a budgetary figure of $400,000 for the project. That funding was included in the highway department as a capital improvement. Date, we've made commitments as a village for $20,000 for the engineering services. Brought forward purchase, the direct purchase of the pool of materials themselves, total of roughly $171,000. That left us with $229,000 left in the budget. At that time, we were putting the contract out for bid for the construction, posted on the village's website. So Traffic Engineering out on our behalf invited all of the local street lighting contract players to bid on the job. So even though we went out and invited five contractors, we got one bid back. We got Ford Lighting. Shockingly, that back at $365,200, uh, 365, 225.20. So that's almost our entire budget. So looking at that, brought this before the Public Works Committee again on, on July 7th, and gave them three options. And he felt very strongly that we would adhere tonight. But he had an option, or an opportunity to talk about it and discuss the options. So tonight, staff is seeking, I should add to that, there was no recommendation by the committee, it was just. I just, staff is seeking direction on how to proceed with the project. Part of tonight's backup, there were three options from which staff would appreciate direction. There's a recommendation that I made that will keep the project moving along in this year. Or there is a third option in which we could reject current proposal from outdoor lighting, out and carry the funding over from this year into 22, budget for the shortfall. Part of next year's budget to complete.
Trustee Knight Rider? Did, did we not say, though, at that meeting that, while we didn't take any action, that we thought the wise move could be to rebid it in January or February?
There was discussion.
Right, when there may be, so that you could possibly get more bidders again? Because this time around was kind of a short timeframe.
That was part of the discussion.
Trustee Myers?
I, I wanted to say that I failed to put it in my motion that the shortage would come from the reserves.
Is it part of your motion, or that's part of the resolution?
My motion.
Okay.
Because it only talks about the 402 we need to, and what is that shortage?
65, 225 plus 10% contingency.
Right.
402.
Right.
What is the shortage, Scott? What is the shortage? 130,000?
My numbers were correct, 172, 326, 08.
172?
173.
Thank you.
Is the second okay with that inclusion?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Baum, did you have your hand up?
Scott, when we were working with this company, getting the samples, talking about the light, they not give us some type of budgetary number, hey, you guys should plan around this amount of money?
Back when we were putting the initial budget together, Traffic Engineering Services gave us our budgetary figure.
Not outdoor lighting consultants who brought us the lights, who talked about the lighting on the street and how it should be?
That was Traffic Engineering Services that did that.
That was Traffic Engineering Services, okay. We discussed this with Traffic Engineering Services, hey, what do you think of these numbers?
I did. You know, I also reached out, heard from outdoor lighting, we've heard from P Systems. I do think that we would get MP Systems to bid on it if we rejected. Might see a reduction potentially in, in the cost of the project. Begins from Traffic Engineering Services, though, is also concerned about just cost increases and materials. Potentially, a decrease could be seen, increase, certainly right now.
So this is, this is my experience for. So this is, this is my experience for the past year now, is numbers from contractors are just coming in. They're afraid of what increases are coming, so they're padding their numbers extra high. I haven't found a solution to get people onto real numbers, other than wait it out. At some contractors that I work with on a regular basis, that they're able to control their subs, they're able to control people. But this is common in the industry right now. It's way out of
Based on your suggestion of be to wait? Or it's just a fact for consideration?
A fact for consideration for now.
Jan Miller, you had your hand up?
Yes. The way I'm reading this, there are 32 of these light posts, light poles. Is it the pole plus the light or just the light?
Yeah, it's the entire assembly, so there would be
Okay. Fine, okay.
Foundation stays. Base, new arm, fixture, cabinets, I'm struggling to pick up for the foundation.
All brand-new. So is there steel in this? Steel? Is the pole steel?
Yes.
Well, steel has gone up dramatically and I would, I would suggest waiting and putting it out for bid to, you know, just having one bid is A, difficult. And then if, are they guaranteeing that they're gonna be able to get the lights? Because there's been a lot of out-of-stock.
We already direct purchased the lighting.
Oh.
So we have those coming from Sternberg. So we will have poles several weeks.
Yeah. So you have all the accouterments? They're just putting them up?
They are providing the cabinet faces, the cabinets, the conduit, the wiring, actual construction. Testing poles, the arrangement of the new poles.
Yeah, labor.
Trustee Hudson.
As, as we're leaving here tonight, and you're pulling your car out of the parking lot, I'd ask each of us to look right. You will see that on the most important street in our village, we have mismatched lights. This were any other street, I might feel different. But this is supposed to be the entryway into Germantown. I know it costs more than any of us want to. But this is civic pride, and this is the first thing that people see when they come into our village. We need to get this fixed, to get it fixed as soon as we can. That's, that's, that's a really good question. Not at any cost. This is not at any cost. This is an additional $173,000. Because we, that's, no, that's a really good question. If we knew that it was gonna get cheaper in the future, if we knew that, if we could claim that as knowledge, I might feel differently. But we don't know that when we go to rebid this, that these numbers are gonna go down. It's, it's the devil you know.
Trustee Rick Miller, and then I'll go to Trustee Myers.
So, Trustee Knight Rider was right. When we were in Public Works, we discussed all three options. And I believe, Scott, that a couple of these people did not respond or did not bid because their construction year was full. And I was of the opinion that it was better to hold it off until 2022. But I wanted to give the village board that opportunity to say, do you want to spend the funds now, or do you want to wait? So that's the discussion we're having right now. Personally, I would want to wait. I like option three. I think that you're gonna get better bids in January. And you're gonna get more bids in January for sure, for the 2022 year. So yes, it doesn't look great right now, but I'm willing to wait a year to get it done. We already have the material. All we have to do is the labor part. So I will make a motion to amend that we use option three and, and hold off until 2022 and rebid it.
Motion made and seconded to amend. Discussion on the motion to amend. Discussion. Trustee Jan Miller.
Have you talked to Outdoor Lighting about timing when they'd be able to get it done?
The contract documents were written, so they had to be before the end of forward with that would be done before the end of the year. And as a quick aside, they are holding their pricing through tonight. Call them tomorrow and say this one.
Hold it for the remainder of the year?
No, they'll hold their pricing through tonight after, after tonight's decision.
All bets off.
All bets.
Then they would take on different projects and fill it in at the time that they would need, probably.
What did, what did our bid document say? That seems unusual to me that we would have a bid document that terminated on the night that we were gonna consider the motion. Usually you have time after the meeting to select the contractor and to get the contract in place and everything else. That, that just seems odd to me.
Well, I think they gave us a price. They gave, typically you get a price for 30 days. And you're seeing it in the industry all over the place. We have electrical contractors giving us pricing and telling us it's good. Almost a month ago, we got this number from Outdoor Lighting. It's gone through this parliamentary procedure. They have honored it through tonight's meeting.
No, I, I don't disagree that, that, that a contractor that is given the choice will undoubtedly lock themselves into as short of a period of time as they can. No question about it. I'm just saying that this, so I guess I have a different question then. Was this actually publicly bid? Did we notice it? Did we?
That was all handled by out, or by a traffic engineer.
Right, that's why he's amazed.
That's why I'm amazed. I, I mean, obviously you guys can, can do what you want. I, I mean, do you have the bid document with you? Well, no, I, I'm just, I mean, if, if, I would consider this to be public construction. That means that for the amount of money we're talking about, it needed to be publicly bid. If what I'm hearing confirms my suspicion, then I don't think we even have a valid number to discuss that night.
Yeah.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Okay?
I have a second on that.
All those in favor of motion to amend? I'm sorry?
Point of order, you have to have a second call for the question.
Okay. All those in Right now, we're, we're considering the motion to amend. As stated, and the motion to amend is to put it off and rebid it in January. All those in favor of that motion to amend? Please say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Always raise your hands. Two unopposed, two opposed. Motion passes. Back to the motion as amended. Further discussion. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Always raise your hands.
Already up.
Two who's opposed. Motion passes. So Brian can see if, if what we voted on wasn't necessary, or what we need to do going forward. So we'll go on to the next item under new business, which is Division Road Reconstruction, urban versus rural, utilizing STP funding. With us then, we have Director of Public Works, Mr. Itachi.
Try to keep this one a little shorter. Bringing this topic forward tonight, we honor that Division Road is in need of repairs. Trying to gather funds over the last, my term here of six years, without success. And so, we've looked at the possibility of just rebuilding it in its, in its present alignment. Minor corrections to maybe some geometric alignments of turning lanes or some storm sewer work. And we're coming up with an estimate of probably 1.3, 1.4 million dollars, which is basically an entire paving project year. And that would be from, structure would be from Mequon Road, south to just south of Wendy Lane where curve is and the road is in fairly good condition up there. So, in discussions with our engineer from Grave, Julie Chapman, it became the possibility that this road might be eligible for some state funding. Wanted to bring that forward because just before I started here, Dodges Bay was funded through this process. Some of you are here, some of you weren't. Dodges Bay went through a process of state funding design. And I'm quite sure all the history of how it happened. Decided by the village to not go with the funding. And the village had to refund somewhere in the neighborhood of $750,000 to the state for design. And then we had to fund the structure of Dodges Bay Road from Division all the way to
We did it in two phases, and the reason that we didn't take the funding is because it was put out for, it was at that time, the, the popular notion was shovel-ready projects. And ours was. And the city of Milwaukee came in and took all the funding and left us with none.
So I just wanted, we just wanted to bring forward what the process involves. The application, first application of two is due August, and then the second part of the application is due in October. And Julie, clarify all that. We just want to bring forward so the board will understand the process of getting funding. It's the Surface Transportation Program Fund, STP for short. And I just want to give a little description of what that involves as far as the process of getting the funding. The years it may take before the project would be designed and constructed. Like to bring Julie forward. Julie Chapman's an engineer with Grave. She's a traffic transportation engineer and associate with Grave. I'll have her describe the details of the funding. Some confusion whether it has to go urban, which would be open ditch drainage. It's possibly into a describing.
So basically what this program is, it's, it's WISDOT-funded dollars. All local municipalities within the state of Wisconsin are allowed to basically apply for this funding, specifically looking road project with STP urban. That you are within the urbanized area that is dictated on this map. It does not mean you have to design the roadway to urban standards by So basically, when I brought this idea forward to Larry, it was more because Division Road is definitely one of widely traveled roadways. It has a higher ADT utility traffic. And so you're looking at a minor arterial that is, has a good possibility of getting funded by the DOT at an 80% cost share with them. So instead of paying 1.3, 1.4 dollars, you'd be paying a percent of that if the DOT This is a marathon, not a sprint by any means. We are at the starting line right now. This application is basically just locate the funds from DOT, set us, set aside for Division Road. From that point on, once we submit the application, which final version of the will then select the application that had been put forward March of 2022. From that standpoint, Germantown would then go forward with a, essentially a request for proposals, but there's no cost aspect based on qualifications. Because then they would on your selection consultant. And then would go consultant that had chosen and that point on, your selected consultant would probably start, I'd say, in the summer months of next year. Contract. Your design would probably run you, say, two years conservatively. So you're looking at potential 2024 for final design purposes. This is going to that would need to finalize before comes construction. Typically then, it's the following year. They will let the project in December, January. Let's say, three years on the very early end, five years on the conservative end. In terms of the PESA ratings of Division Road, it is three in some segments, four in others, five at the tail end. But you still have years left to Division Road. The, the high quality is poor. It is because of the different types of cracking that's kind of But there is still life left to the road. So to prematurely rip it up, just because, you know, a lot of individuals quality is poor is a little So we still have life left to it. I, going through this funding process is definitely help the village solidify to help basically reboot. Some other ideas that, so one of the reasons why I thought Division Road was a it's kind of an entryway into your So that's what T asks for. They really want you to tell a story as to why this vision that we have should So options that are included in this would potentially be shared bike lanes. So bike accommodations, bike path of some sort on your comprehensive plan. So Division Road would have to have some type of for all users. Also bicyclist. The current facilities that are on Division Road are technically not really ADA compliant. And so with DOT funding, you would get best rean accommodation. You could look at different bike accommodations, whether it's on-road bike lanes or off-road bike. All flushed out. In regards to Earl versus Bourbon. Options that you whether the road is going to be urban. Combination of both. Plus the location south of Culver. There is basically the options of how it's kind of like, like half and half type. DNR, Army Corps of Engineers, obviously, ditches maintained, just be from like perspective. So when you have a mixture of both, it kind of plays into your of support of other organizations like the DNR. So widening is not necessarily required. The only thing that would be of the pay is if you are gonna put bike lane onto the facility versus off the facility. You have just this facility, how you have it with two 12-foot lanes, you would have to provide a multi-use path, which is not currently available. Zerable would actually be that so that you can accomplish both bicyclists and pedestrians.
Julie, in regard to seal coating, that usually gives you seven years, would you say?
I would say more on the three to five, and it's very dependent on what type of roadway it is.
Let's take this road.
This road, I would probably put it more to the average of like three to four years in terms of steel coating. I believe the, actually the last rehabilitation of Division Road documented in
Two years ago it was done. Steel coating, two years ago.
Steel coating is just a
No, I know. But that's what I'm talking about. I'm sorry.
That has nothing, that's not gonna prolong the life of the roadway because it's already been severely deteriorated.
Thank you for your answers.
Trustee Hudson.
Replacement of the bridge?
So it depends on the actual bridge itself, if it actually needs to be replaced. So what the consultant would likely do So, what the consultant would likely do is evaluate the conditions of it. It can stay in place as is, but after that, so, that would be a part of the application. So, that's what we're kind of looking at right now in terms of the application. There needs to be something done to that bridge. Terms of width to accommodate the roadway should be wide enough, depending on what your section would be.
We just might have to move the, the bike lane. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Another thing I'd like to add is the one point, essentially putting, if the village decided they wanted to add streetlight, so, these are all things that we want to kind of include, it's like, in our box, that we want to add to the project potentially, that the funding cap that the DOT set is not like at a bare, missing it. We want to actually, to something that is bearable to the...
Are you looking for us tonight for just the approval to go and look at STP funding?
Just want to bring this forward in, in, in consideration of the board, that of the timeframe. So, aspect, we could take Division Road. Or do we, can we, both delay constructing STP funding, proceed with a five-year program to reconstruct it. What we would do to describe the private securita, some considerations, potentially street lighting.
To accept the engineering from the, with the state of Wisconsin for its upgrades.
Correct. They have standards you have to go.
Right. That, that is what the engineering has presented. And it's not always a, I'm not saying that in a negative way. It's just that knowing that we would construct it one way, and when the state comes in and becomes involved, it, it's, they look at it for 25 years or more use, so they would engineer it to last 25 years. In my opinion, I think that's a good way to go for this road. Since I've lived directly off of this road, I've, in the time that I've lived in the house that we're currently in, since 1995, I've seen an increase in traffic, a tremendous increase of traffic. It is our second most-used thoroughfare north to south across, I would call, the urban area of the village. Doesn't go across the whole village. It used to, and was proposed to at one point, but it would have to go through the golf course in order to be contiguous. But it is, it is in that area, the second most-used road to go between county line and, and Mequon Road. And it is in bad, I would say, bad shape, but not to the level that Dodges Bay was at the time where we just decided to do it and not wait for STP funding anymore, because in some cases, parts of that road were getting, deteriorating to the point where it was dangerous for bikers and for, for cars as well. But in this instance, I think this is, this road is a good candidate for this, because it helps us to improve it to the level that it needs to be improved for the future of our village in the next 25 years. And I would not be against, and I'd like to see designs for it to be more urbanized. Every neighborhood that touches this road has curb and gutter, every one. And then you have a few houses that do front it. You don't have the level that we had at, on Dodges Bay, because most of the residents that were against the expansion or widening of the road, fronted the road. And, and they came and talked out against this and persuaded the board, along with some other things, for us to do it the way it was done. There are a lot of, a lot of different factors of why the road was done the way it was done, Dodges Bay meaning. But I think this road is a good candidate for STP funding, because we get the, the additional increases that we need for it, and it also helps us to, to use that road in the future 25 years as more things grow and more people come through our community.
So, our purpose is ju, is that for bringing here is that there'd be a general consensus from the board that proceed on this longer-term project. There are stipulations that come with it from the DOT as far as can you take them somewhat of how it gets constructed, although Julie has talked with...
Are you proposing that the Division Road stay two-lane with the bike path or other user paths?
So, it would really just be a traffic project. So, with the dollars, you're not looking at present-day traffic, accommodate, so, it really would, so, basically, see...
Looking for a consensus? Do we need a motion for that? Are we just looking at a consensus of, of kind of a...
I can't speak for what the department may be looking for, but just a verbal direction or consensus would be fine. If you wanted to do that in the form of a motion, that would be fine too.
Trustee Myers.
What would you like? Motion?
If, if that's what you like, make one.
Oh, I'm asking you.
I, I'd be fine with a motion.
I make a motion to that effect that we, make a motion to that effect, and I agree, I agree with your assumption. I, I would like to really see this road done with what Julie is...
Your motion then is to approve going forward to, to look at the possibility and, and to start the process of utilizing STP funding for the
Yes, sir.
Construction, or reconstruction of Division Road. Motion made and seconded, discussion? No discussion? Since there's no costs at this time, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Not opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming.
It's free money. I'm fine with that.
Next item, under new business, is, let's see, too much scribbling. Item E. Location and design of public works building. The village board may enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes 19.85 subsection 1, subparagraph E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and then may reconvene into open session to take such action as it deems appropriate.
Motion to go into closed session?
Motion made and seconded, discussion?
Well, and I guess, similar to previous meetings, there are some topics that we're going to cover that could be done in open session. Then, two slides I have at the beginning, and then I think it would be appropriate to go into closed session.
To include whom? No, he's, no, he had it because he presented it for, and it's right there already.
For us, I mean, for the people. The, the last I'd heard the video was, the video feed on the cable channel was not working yet. So, boy.
Here's a phone call tomorrow. That's, that's fine. Anyway, it's really on us. And who would else be here?
We need the staff from Grave, actually, everyone in the room.
Okay. Lucky you. Including Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yes, yeah. Mark would need to be here.
Okay, even though he's short timer?
Yes. Especially because he's a short timer.
All right. Any other discussion on, on the motion? No other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Trustee Myers?
Trustee Baum?
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye. So, we'll start in open session, and then at the point where we need to go into closed session, we will. In case we don't get a chance to, the next regular village board meeting will be on Monday, August 2nd at 7:00 PM here at the Village Hall Board Room. And there will be no village board meeting on September 6th, 2021, because that will be Labor Day. So, let's start with then, the open session part of new business item E. Sure. Can you take a two-minute break? Two-minute break, please. Turn your microphones off, Okay. All right. Let's go back into session here, and we're here to discuss the last new business item of, business item E, which is a location and design of public works building for the open session part, and then at the point, we will then go into closed session. So, Mr. Krecklow, or Mr. Ratachik? No?
Well, I'll, I'll start out in the interest of time. I'll cover the items, but there, we have folks here who can answer questions and help with that information. So, there were several questions at the last meeting responding to, providing additional. One, we mentioned on the temporary baseball facilities and what that would look like if the village board makes a decision to move forward with constructing the public works location at current site, having some baseball facilities available until a new recreational site could be located and constructed. So, we'll make an addition on that. You also asked for cost estimates for my, says we did some research on that, some additional information on eminent processes, the village attorney. And that may be where we want to go into closed session. We could become aware of a potential site that should be aware of, that is a possibility. Some information on that for the village. Tonight is the night for difficult decisions, I think, because we've been discussing this for some time, and we are getting a time for decision making. So, the additional information on the temporary baseball facilities, and this was all information that the trader put together, I'll, I'll go through. Basically, there are three recommendations he's making for total cost of $14,300, which would provide facilities for Little League to use that are, are similar or, or in some cases... has there been any thought or ideas from, from, from baseball, they're the long-term, what is the long-term answer? Because none of us want temporary to become permanent.
I would have to come through this board if we're going to be involved or working with those committees to see what kind of fundraising and support they want to be involved in. So no, I don't think any of those discussions that happened, it's still pretty, pretty new. Back when we were trying to place the outdoor performing art pavilion, it sticks in my mind that I remember a discussion with previous village, school board president Bob Soderberg, that at that time, they were looking to get rid of the field or wanting to know if we had any interest in the field on the back of Kennedy. Is that still viable, do we know? So is there room on, at, near those two fields, behind Kennedy Middle School, is there room for one more field back there? That is all school-owned property? Yeah, could we go back to, I don't know when you're going to meet with the superintendent again, but could we possibly ask them about those two fields and adding another one?
Yes, that's, that's a conversation I think, you know, we could have, and I, I think they, I would be surprised if they aren't willing to at least talk about it. And actually, just as a side note, we are, I have been talking with the superintendent about having a joint meeting the fifth week of August with the school board and the village board, so that might be another opportunity to have some of those conversations. And if I can just add quickly in response to Trustee Hudson's question about the involvement with the baseball clubs, so, and I think if this is a direction that the village board wants to go, one of the steps, process-wise, would be for the village attorney and I, and Mark to talk with them about their lease agreement, and we would need some sort of a new agreement with them to, to relocate them on a temporary basis, but then also, and I think this is similar to what happened with the, the performing pavilion in, at Fireman's Park, then talking about how to move forward with a permanent facility and what that partnership would look like.
We'd need a memorandum of understanding?
I think something like that, yeah.
Anything else on the first two items? If not, then we can go into closed session unless anybody else has any other questions. All right, then we'll go into closed session, and as it stated earlier, our next village board meeting will be on August 2nd at 7:00 PM here in the Village Hall Boardroom, and there will be no village board meeting on September 6th. So, couple minutes for people to close down, turn off your microphones, and we'll wait for the audio visual to finish up.